Okay, will you please read the roll call, please?
Mr. Bracken.
First I have to have a motion to remove, to get out of executive session.
Motion to recrue, no.
To adjourn.
Turn from executive session.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now you can read the roll.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snively?
I'm here. I would point out Alex would be here. Alex French, but she's on business, out of town and sends her regrets that she can't be here. We will now do a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One second. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any changes or adjustments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We will move to a series of proclamations. I think I have them in order. So, whereas the basis for the continuity of any society is education, and in Oxford, the education of our youth is a priority, and whereas in order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make better life for themselves as individuals and for society as a whole. And whereas a global spiritual leader, the rabbi, Rabbi Menachem Schneerson stressed that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas such an education can nurture the unity of diverse peoples through encouraging increased acts of goodness and kindness with an awareness that even a single positive act can change the world and usher in an era of global peace. And whereas April 19th, 2024, will mark 122 years since the rabbi's birth, and this year begins the celebrations of the 75th anniversary of his leadership of the Shabad Lubavitch movement. And whereas Education and Sharing Day is observed each year on the rabbi's birthday in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. A day to pause and reflect on our responsibility to ensure that our youth have the foundation necessary to lead lives rich in purpose and fulfillment through service and good works. So now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 19th, 2024, as Education and Sharing Day in Oxford, and call upon everyone to work together to create a better, brighter, and more promising future for all. And I believe we have someone to accept.
Thank you very much, City Council, and to everyone for Education Day for honoring the Lubavitch Rabb's birthday this Friday on the 19th. I also want to take my moment here to speak to City Council and to the mayor. It's no secret that many Jewish communities around this beautiful country are being harassed since October 7th and the horrific attacks. And I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the City of Oxford and to our wonderful community here. One of our students also to represent. We are fortunate and we are lucky, and we don't take that for granted. We hope that that continues that way. My family and I are celebrating 10 years in Oxford, and we love every moment of it. And our community and our organization, Chabad, has been growing leaps and bounds. We're celebrating Passover in less than a week. We have a lot to look forward to. But really that, that our community is safe and that our students feel safe is speaks volumes. Thanks to the both police departments who know to keep an eye out for us and make sure that on all our events and that the students and the community are really happy. So, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Maya. I'm a senior at Miami, and I am the president of Chabad. We are not a school with a big Jewish population, but we sure do have a lot of Jewish pride, and that is because of people like you who are able to give us the protection that we need for events. And thank you for making us feel safe.
You're welcome. Y'all are going to get tired of hearing me, but I have another proclamation. Whereas on April 22nd, 1970, United States Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin and Dennis Hayes organized the first nationwide day devoted to environmental awareness and education that was celebrated by an estimated 20 million Americans. And whereas this day of environmental awareness and education is celebrated worldwide in some 180 countries with the participation of over 4,000 separate organizations. And whereas individuals and institutions have a mutual responsibility to seek ecological, economical, and ethical choices that enable the world as well as our individual communities to establish and maintain sustainable societies. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, do hereby proclaim that on Saturday, April 22nd, 2024, the City of Oxford will recognize and participate for this and future generations, and to approach every day as Earth Day. Do we have anybody who's... Okay. An Earth Day celebration will be in the park in uptown, so I hope we're all there. You want to say anything about this?
No, sir.
Okay. I wanted to give you that opportunity. Number three. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Parenthetically, I lived for three years in Nebraska and they needed it. Okay. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas trees can produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, and help to absorb rainwater and slow the velocity of stormwater runoff. And whereas trees are a resource providing us with wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, paper, and countless other wood products. And whereas associated with the management of the some 3,585 street, park, and public trees in the community, the City of Oxford has fulfilled the National Arbor Day Foundation's requirements for Tree City USA for 28 consecutive years. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, Tree City USA, do hereby proclaim that on April 26th, 2024, the last Friday of the month, the City of Oxford will recognize and participate in the national and international celebration of Arbor Day. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I don't know if we have... You're going to take this one?
Yes, sir.
On Arbor Day at the community park, they will be dedicating trees that are being planted to honor departed family members and friends. So, if you're interested, it's a good time.
Thank you, sir.
One more. Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking to more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly. And whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas today, the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, D.C., the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. And whereas from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. And whereas Oxford was first incorporated in 1960 and is proudly served today by the city council and a municipal workforce of 131 full-time and 140 part-time or seasonal employees dedicated public servants. Now therefore, I, William B. Snively, Mayor of the City of Oxford, Ohio, hereby proclaim, excuse me, May 2024 as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary. Is Sam here? Received that. I actually have another proclamation that I'm delivering on Sunday. So, there's a lot of proclaiming to be done in the month of April. All right. The next item is appointments to boards and commissions. We have three unexpired terms, so these are appointments up until June. And the first one is for the Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission.
I make a motion to nominate Reema Dench.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Thank you. Next, we have an unexpired term on the Environmental Commission.
I make a motion to nominate Jim Dench.
Okay, is there...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And finally, we have the Board of Zoning Appeals.
A motion to nominate Matt Wyatt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Matt Wyatt. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I would point out to people that there are a lot of vacancies on boards and commissions that will all come due in June. So if you are interested in having an active part in our city, think about applying for some of those boards and commissions. You'll have to apply. If you've applied before, you're going to have to apply again, so we have a fresh view of who's interested. But there are a number of openings, and council will appreciate all the volunteerism that we get from our citizens. Okay, next is our discussion item, which is the Use of Force Report by Special Counsel. And here's what I... And just so everybody knows the process, we're first going to listen to the Special Counsel, and they're going to describe their report and kind of hit the highlights for us. I'm then going to recognize Chief Jones and let him give a response. I will then recognize counselors who might have questions or concerns, and then I will recognize the public for any comments or concerns. So, everybody's going to have a chance, and we'll follow that procedure. So first, let me introduce our special counselors. Welcome.
Thank you. Let me introduce ourselves. I'm David Williamson.
I'm Jonathan Hollinsburg.
And we were hired by this counsel to review the manual of the Oxford Police Department and to review the facts surrounding an incident that took place outside Brick Street Bar on November 17, 18, last fall, 2023. Our particular charge was to see if there was compliance with the use of force policy. And to do that, we first had to review the policy itself, hold it up to the light to see if it complied, the policy itself complied with prevailing law. And the ultimate standard is a case out of the United States Supreme Court. And we found that it did, in fact. And in fact, a lot of the language in the policy mirrors the language from the United States Supreme Court case. We reviewed all records, reports, incident reports, internal emails, video and audio recordings that were needed to conduct our investigation. And we conducted a number of interviews with both police officers as well as staff from the Brick Street Bar. We then provided a report, I think it's about 23 pages long, to the Law Director, the City Manager, and the Chief, summarizing our findings and making some recommendations. Jonathan and I divided our work effort where I took the lead in the use of force investigation. I shouldn't say the investigation, but that part of the report. Because the second part of the report or our charge was to also look at unwritten rules and good police practices involving the department's handling of evidence. And in this particular case, they were the videos from the bar and that were eventually put into the possession of the police department. And Jonathan handled that part of the report.
If I may, so there's no confusion, we actually were present interviewing witnesses. So when Dave says that we split up some duties, he means we split up the duty of initially drafting a part of the report, but just like a court of appeals, just like you might, or just like the Supreme Court, we consult with one another. We review the draft, we made changes, we passed that back and forth, and ultimately agreed upon the language that became the report. So we consolidated our two drafts so that we could address what we perceived to be the two most important issues that arose out of this assignment. We were assisted by your Law Director and his staff in scheduling the interviews. We interviewed the Chief and certain officers that were involved or identified as being involved at the time in question. And we interviewed certain bar staff employees. Didn't interview everybody. If we'd have tried to interview everybody at the bar that night or everybody in the City of Oxford, we might have broken the bank here. We didn't want to do that. That wasn't the goal. We believe the support of the Law Director's office and the Chief and his staff was very important to allowing us to coordinate with council for the bar staff and the officers so that we could get those interviews done in a timely manner. We were assigned this task at the end of January. We're here in the middle of April. It may seem like a long time, but coordinating schedules is not the easiest thing in the world to do. And more importantly, it takes some time to absorb the information that we were provided, the written information, and then of course, the interviews themselves and making sure that we had completed our questions as much as we deemed reasonable and necessary in order to be able to provide this report to you.
The report is quite long. I'm not going to read the report line for line, word for word.
Thank you.
So, and I understand council has at least had the opportunity to review it. And so we are at the council's pleasure as to how you wish us to further proceed. If you have questions or if you'd like us to get into at least a little more of a summary?
I think you should give us a summary. The report has been made available to the public.
Good.
It's online. It's... We've got copies in front of us. They're in the agenda, so it's a public document.
All right. Well, let me give you a summary of the use of force. First of all, we start from what is the legal standard that drives our work. And that we get from the U.S. Supreme Court, that all claims that are subject to an investigator must be judged by objective reasonableness, which is that we must look at the actions of the police officer as to what he saw, heard, was aware of at the time that he confronted the person who was the subject of his use of force. We also start with the acknowledgement that use of force is a component of police work. There's... Good police work always involves some element of force. The key is that when force is used, it must be reasonable and necessary. And by reasonable, meaning that it is held to the standard of another reasonable police officer would act in a certain way. And so that's the standard that we start from. And that's knowing that the language that I count on from this U.S. Supreme Court case is the same language in your policy. So that made it a little bit easier so that we weren't having two different standards to refer to. So what we found was a circumstance where, first of all, there was an arrangement made as a result of the Oregon Entertainment District shootings in Dayton a few years back. There was a concern by the owner of the Brick Street Bar to make an arrangement with the department to where the bar would pay for the overtime of a police officer who would be assigned to a particular detail. And that was on those occasions where it was anticipated that there would be a large number of patrons, particularly on weekend nights. The police officer's detail was not to be involved with the operations of the bar, but was to be in close proximity, right across the street, in his squad car, armed. So in the event that something might occur, like what had happened in Dayton, that an officer would be ready at hand. So given that basis, there were incidents that then happened as between the individual, Mr. Johnson, and bar staff inside the bar that the police officer was unaware of. Now, we gathered that information, but it was only for the purpose of corroborating what it was that the officer saw when he came upon the scene, because he knew nothing of what had happened. What he saw when he came upon the scene were four men struggling on the ground just off Poplar Street toward the back of the building. And it was a, as he described it, a violent struggle. And as he gave commands to the one individual and then leaned over, two of the bar staff let go of Mr. Johnson, and then Mr. Johnson and Officer Blauvelt became engaged with one another. The one video showed pretty clearly, engaged to the point where Officer Blauvelt, his feet left the ground. And as our report indicates, he realized that he was struggling with a much younger, much stronger man than he was. So, the first use of force was as he gained his feet. He had three strikes to the side of the head, upper neck area. And then just after that, a backup police officer came and was assisting, trying to get handcuffs on Mr. Johnson. And Officer Blauvelt, at that point, had two additional knee strikes to the hip midsection area of Mr. Johnson. Eventually, Mr. Johnson was placed on his stomach and was double handcuffed with the assistance of a third officer, Officer Holt. That was the extent of the use of force. We did not find any use of force beyond what I've just described. There are a number of particular criteria that the policy mentions to assist an investigator in determining whether or not the force was reasonable. And we outlined those in our report. And as we went through those one by one, we came to the conclusion that, again, in this unique set of circumstances, because each set of circumstances is indeed unique, and taking the admonition from the policy and from the court that any evaluation of reasonableness must allow for the fact that officers are often forced to make split-second decisions about the amount of force that reasonably appears necessary in a particular situation with limited information in circumstances that are tense, uncertain, and rapidly evolving. And that described this situation here, that this officer came upon a scene that was already, there was a struggle engaged upon him walking into it. And everything happened in a matter of seconds. So, this was a rapidly evolving and tense situation. So, taking into consideration everything that we did, we reached the conclusion that under this unique set of circumstances, Officer Blauvelt's actions did comply with the City of Oxford Police Department's policy manual regarding the use of force.
I think it's important to emphasize what Officer Blauvelt was seeing and hearing as he came upon the four men on the ground early that morning. It's our understanding from our interviews and the body cam videos that we've been able to review that Officer Blauvelt, as the bricks bar detail officer assigned that night, received an urgent radio communication from the bar staff. With some panic in his voice, one of the managers called for help. We can't tell you exactly when that happened, but it looks like it happened during the time in which they were, the three bar staff members were engaged with Mr. Johnson as they were moving down the side of Poplar going north. So Officer Blauvelt comes running toward this scene, going through a number of patrons that were on the sidewalk at that time. And as he approached the scene, there are four men on the ground. It's 1:30 in the morning. Officer Blauvelt assumes that there is a violent struggle going on, and so he rushes over to see what's going on. So what we have is we have the officer being called by someone who speaks in a rather panicky type... panicky type voice, "We need help." And it's Blauvelt's job to respond because he's now the detailed officer on the scene. And so, he does. And in responding, he sees this group of people. He then attempts to gain control of the situation, only to realize that the three men were holding Mr. Johnson down. And when he moved in to try to take control of the situation, two of the three let go. Mr. Johnson is now in a position where he is no longer being restrained or held down. Mr. Johnson wants up. He tries to get up. The record indicates that the officer told Mr. Johnson that he should roll over. Mr. Johnson refuses to roll over. The bar staff presence said that they heard the officer give the command several times. The officer indicates that he looked Johnson in the eye when Johnson was on the ground, and Johnson saw his uniform, could recognize him as a police officer. So, with that in mind, the assumption is that Johnson would have been...should have cooperated and at least acknowledged the officer's command to roll over so he could take control of the circumstances. That didn't happen. Those are the facts that led to this situation, that led to the body strikes, that led to the knee strikes that ultimately became an issue here. Part of our job also was to try to document what people were telling us. And so, we requested and received all of the body cam video that provided the relevant data, the information that was observed at the time. And we also learned through that that there was the bar staff's security footage. What we realized after we got the written documentation is that the newspaper article was talking about an incident where the officer appeared to have been essentially assaulting the young man. And it implied that something was going on that wasn't appropriate. As we've said in our report, we found that the officer's conduct was reasonable under these facts and circumstances, and it complied with policy and it complied with law as we understand it. Fundamental problem with public relations, and in your business, that's what you do, you engage in public relations, you have to explain things to the people, is that the video that was ultimately placed on social media about a month after this incident had occurred was a video that showed the bar staff and Mr. Johnson struggling at Poplar, going to the ground, and the officer running over, and the things that we've shared before about being released, engaged, rolling over, efforts to get Mr. Johnson under control. The bar staff was asked for a copy of the security video. And that security video would have allowed us to check it against the body cam video that we received from the officers. What we learned is that the social media video was one of the three file footages on the bar staff's security footage that was in the possession of the police that night. They obtained a copy from the bar staff. But unfortunately, as part of the department's policies, practices, and procedures, they upload the electronic data into their computer system. This third file wouldn't upload. Turns out that that's the third file that made its way to social media. That's the file that shows the knee strikes by Officer Blauvelt and shows the body strikes. The chief, in reviewing the use of force incident report, which the officers are required to submit when they have an encounter like this, had not seen the third file. That file, when it reached social media and the chief became aware of it, caused the office to react in a way as to suggest that new information has come to our attention that suggests that maybe something happened on the 18th that was inappropriate. The irony is, the file was in the possession of the police all along. The problem was that the chief hadn't seen the file. Now, you ask, well, how is that possible? Well, the files, there were three videos on the USB drive that were provided by the bar staff that night. Two of the three loaded. The third one didn't load. That's the one that's in question. The chief obviously was aware of and reviewed the two, but not the third one because he didn't use the thumb drive to put into his computer and look at it and see what was on the thumb drive. Thus, he assumed that there was new information, when in reality, there was no new information known to the police. It's just that the chief didn't have complete knowledge of what the police had in its possession because the thumb drive was in the evidence room. That's a problem when it comes to trying to explain things to the public. If the person who's tasked with having to make that explanation doesn't have all the information, it's likely that in trying to offer an explanation, you might be making a mistake. And you need to have all the information in order to make a clear, concise, and correct statement to the public. And in this instance, all the information wasn't known to the people who were responding publicly. And I think it led to an issue in the community that probably wouldn't have happened if everyone was all on the same page, all the information and the data known had been reviewed before the department made any comments regarding the officer's use of force report and, more importantly, responding to the video as it appeared on social media. So, we made a couple of recommendations. Obviously, the one thing which we wanted to make sure of is that the department should give some thought to the idea of defensive tactics training, because we think with more defensive tactic training, it might bring into consideration the concept of de-escalation when you approach a situation. Depending on the facts known to the officer at the time, what's the most reasonable thing to be done here? That'll help your officers as they encounter situations in the field. I'm not a police officer, but I can certainly understand and appreciate the risks they run every day. You just don't know what is necessary in order to make sure that the people in the community are safe, because you don't know what you're going to encounter that day. But it's important that you prepare as best you can and train, and the department already has this as part of this training program. We just think a little bit more focus on it might be helpful. The second recommendation we made has to do with the management of evidence. It's clear that the written material surely indicated that the video was in the police's presence and in a possession. The problem is, is five of the officers involved that night saw all three videos, including the one that made it to social media, but none of them told the chief what was on that third video that didn't upload. The chief obviously has access to all of the evidence in the evidence room. And we can only surmise, looked at what had been uploaded, did not pull the actual thumb drive to see if, in fact, that's the only thing that was on there. And so, we think that there needs to be some improvement in the way in which the department communicates when it takes evidence in and makes clear to those who are responsible for administering the evidence that they are aware of everything that's in the possession of the police, even if it leads to some criminal complaint.
Okay. Thank you, both of you. And if you'll stay with us, I'm sure people will have questions, but I'd like to direct the chief of police to come up and give his response. So, just hang tight.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think Mr. Williamson and Mr. Hollingsworth summarized much of that very well. You know, they did a thorough job reviewing all this. You heard what they did. I won't repeat a lot of this. But I think with any internal affairs investigation, typically, we would do that. And when we get that report back, we have to then...when I get the report, I have to make a recommendation to city manager of what the finding is. So, after getting their report, we made a finding of exoneration to Officer Blauvelt, meaning that the alleged conduct occurred, but the actions taken were lawful and there were...there was no misconduct. So, previous to this internal affairs investigation, the...this was investigated by the sheriff's office for a criminal case and then reviewed by the Butler County Prosecutor's Office. And they had found that Officer Blauvelt's use of force was justified. As the attorney said, you know, these are split-second judgments in situations that are tense, uncertain, rapidly changing. These are things that we actually encounter fairly often as when we try to maintain public order and in these chaotic situations. So, the special counsel, one of the things that in their interviews, you know, every police officer, including myself, that was interviewed, was read their Garrity rights. It's similar to Miranda, but it means something else, basically. It means you have to be truthful, and if you fail to answer questions, you can be disciplined or determined...determination. So, it was a fairly intense interview, and they garnered a lot of information. They...as they investigate the documenting of the use of force, and what they said had happened is true, like because these files were uploaded into our CAD system or our RMS system, I thought that was all that was on the thumb drive, didn't go get the actual thumb drive, and that led to a host of failures on our part. And that's my responsibility as the chief. And while they found no violations of police policy regarding the handling of that video evidence, it was very evident to us before we even saw their report that there were improvements that needed made in our police procedures. So, prior to this, before we got the report, but after this incident and learning about it, we implemented a lot of procedures that have already improved the handling of use of force reports in their administrative review, including collection of video evidence for both, not just the use of...not just the incident report, as it was done in this case, but collecting additional video for the use of force reporting. We still do that use of force reporting on paper versus like our incident reports that are done electronically. So, right there, there's room for improvement on that. But other things that we started implementing and will review more closely after receiving the report, it's just a more thorough use of force report that focuses on those factors they mentioned in our policy. I don't think we've written use of force reports like that in the past where we focus on those factors. So, from the officer up through the supervisory process and including definitely my administrative review of all use of force reports, we just need to do a more thorough, detailed job of doing that. Additional communication, descriptions and the narratives of these reports when evidence collected. If there's a problem uploading it, it should be documented in your narrative. And then, we're looking at additional procedural steps and even looking at some performance management software that will include, you know, use of force reporting, performance evaluations, those type of things. So, we're evaluating those measures and trying to work with that. The investigator report indicated a need for additional, more frequent defensive tactics and de-escalation training. Again, we recognize that as well, and we've developed a comprehensive training plan, and we're going to work on those necessary improvements as a result of this report. It includes an emphasis on subject control training as well as de-escalation training. And our goal is to maintain those high standards of conduct to ensure the public serve with the professional police services they deserve. So, I recognize we had failures in the aftermath of this incident, and they can be corrected basically by tightening up our ship, doing a better job, being more detailed. So, I hope we can continue to work with counsel, with PCRC, and any other community stakeholders to kind of continue that discussion, maybe go into more detail at those meetings about steps we've taken or steps we may need to take and kind of, you know, reassure the public that we want to serve them well. You know, I think we learned a lot tonight, but I was also able to attend Mr. Johnson's criminal trial last week. And, you know, until that trial was over, we can't release a lot of the audio of body cams and things of that nature. But now, that trial's over. And if, by attending that, I was able to hear testimony directly from people involved. And I think that was eye-opening, and we learned more about the incident overall, what was going through the officer's mind, what the staff was doing. And they were, of course, cross-examined by his attorney, and so, you really...a lot came out of that. He was found guilty of assault, and he was found guilty of resisting arrest. He was found not guilty of underage intoxication, and then, the jury couldn't reach a verdict on the criminal trespass. So, that was declared a mistrial on that element. So, we hope he's able to put this behind him and move forward in a productive way. Similarly, we want to move our forward and department forward in a productive way. And again, I've shared those details with our training plan, with counsel, and PCRC. I expect to have a more in-depth discussion with them as we go forward with that. And then, and of course, we're always willing to sit down with different community groups to talk further in detail about these incidents and about our police departments as a whole. So, I want to thank the citizens and counsel for all their patience. This was a lengthy investigative process. This is...when we do internals, they take a long time, and we want to do them right. So, I thank Mr. Hollingsworth and Mr. Williamson for their work on that investigation. That was conducted independent of our department. I scheduled officers for them. The law department read us their Garrity rights. I didn't read Garrity rights to officers. That was the whole point, like let the counsel do their investigation to try to achieve those goals of transparency and achieving the public trust in that process itself. So, I also want to thank our officers because this...these Friday, Saturday nights are like this sometimes, and they deal with these tense situations, and they work tirelessly to deliver that safety, that order, and that higher quality of life to our citizens while respecting the constitutional rights of all. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, at this time, councilors, if you have comments or questions.
Do we want to do it by...because we probably have some questions for our chief, and we probably have some questions.
Yeah, maybe we'll start with questions or comments.
Yeah, let's do questions first, then hear from the public, and then maybe comments.
Yeah. So, if you have questions for the council, Mr. Williamson and Mr. Hollingsworth, welcome back. And so, if you have questions for them or comments, yeah.
Sure. My biggest one is the report reads like a record of fact, but your job, as far as I can understand, wasn't just to receive a report from us, but to investigate the veracity of the incident overall and come up with conclusions or...sorry. It's not just to receive a report and evaluate whether a policy was violated, but it was to determine the veracity of the evidence before us and sort of make conclusions about what actually happened. And I read the report, but I don't believe Mr. Johnson was interviewed for this. We didn't have any report from him. And it seems like there's at least two sides, if not 10 or more sides, to what happened. And the person who this is about, we never got his side, and the report never acknowledges that. That's significant to me, even if you couldn't get it, especially because he had other court proceedings going on. To not acknowledge that he wasn't asked for his opinion of what happened seems like a major piece of missing evidence. Could you respond to that?
I sure can. First of all, we were aware that Mr. Johnson had been charged with some criminal offenses. And I should tell you that in my almost now 48 years of practicing law, I've done criminal defense work myself. Every person under our Fifth Amendment to the United States Constitution that is accused of crime has the absolute right to remain silent. And as we all know, the drill, anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. Had we interviewed Mr. Johnson, first of all, had his lawyer permitted it, then we would have put ourselves in a position to be subpoenaed by the prosecuting attorney to come and testify at the criminal trial as to what Mr. Johnson said, because at that point, he would have waived his right to remain silent. Second point is, the focus of our investigation were on the actions of the police officer. It was not our duty to determine whether there was any fault on the part of Mr. Johnson. Now, I understand what you're saying. You're asking about the veracity of, of what we found. What we did look at were all the body cam videos and the several videos from the bar staff, interviews with the bar staff as well as police officers and, and the police officer involved himself. So, that itself gives us confidence that we've got enough evidence to reach conclusions. Now, if Mr. Johnson had given us evidence that had been contrary to what we had gathered, we would have then have been left with the same task of then determining what, what do we believe? And our job was to focus on pursuant to our engagement is did Officer Blaveld's actions comply with the policy made?
Yeah, we, we were not, we were not tasked with being the judge or the jury as to what happened. So, so I, I definitely appreciate your concerns about whether or not you think we've got all the evidence and therefore the report should reflect more than what's in there, meaning reflect what Mr. Johnson's position was on the facts. David's point about counsel not allowing us to interview his client with the criminal charges pending, if the client, if the counsel had done that, the client had consented, that's an ethical violation as far as I'm concerned with respect to counsel for advising his client to speak publicly about a pending criminal matter. And I don't know that counsel would have allowed that. And we did talk about it, just so you know, it wasn't like Mr. Williamson and I, I've known David now, I've been practicing forty-one years, I've known David forty-one years. It wasn't like we sat there and said, "Well, do you want to know what Johnson has to say?" Of course we did, but we saw video evidence that corroborated things that at least allowed us to say, here's what we can see from the officer's perspective about what's going on. Whether or not the staff did something wrong, whether, whether or not the officers did something which we didn't find that there was a violation of the use of force policy, which is what we were tasked with doing. We weren't tasked with finding out whether or not someone was guilty or not guilty.
But you guys are speaking as if you absolutely know what happened. I've watched this video, all the videos, over and over. I've screenshotted them, I've written notes and it is not always clear what happened. Page eleven, part M, it says, "It is not clear why Johnson pulled Blaveld down on himself, but this action gave rise to the use of force." And I agree with that. The whole incident, in my opinion, kind of comes down to that moment. And I've watched that video so many times and I can't see him being pulled down. I don't know what happened, but it is not clear. And the fact that this lays out a report as if it's just a report of fact, this is what happened and we know it, there's no confidence. And then the other thing is, I don't, I understand why you might not have interviewed Mr. Johnson, but to not say he wasn't interviewed for this is crazy to me. It's like you, you witnessed something and you have two, at least two opposing sides, if not multiple sides going on, and not acknowledge that the person, the subject of the matter has never put input into something in which it's not clear because the video is not clear is kind of crazy to me. Like the public needs to know, we need to know. You could read this and otherwise go, "Well, that's the end of it." But we don't really know what happened at really crucial parts and it kills me.
I, I hate to take issue with that, but if the only piece of evidence we had was the video that you can't make sense of, then I get your point. But we also had all of the other men who were present.
But they also all have reason to object to what might be truth. And I don't know what's truth here, but it's only one side being represented.
But that, that's why the video matters, because the video isn't lying to us. The fact that you can't discern with clarity.
So, what you're saying with clarity, you know that he was pulled down?
What I, what I'm saying is that we can clearly see Officer Blaveld rolled over toward the ground and his feet are off the ground. We can see that. How he got there may be totally irrelevant, but what matters is, is that in his mind, he has now lost control of a situation whereas the police officer involved, he's supposed to maintain control. That's the problem. We're not arguing with you whether or not you can see with clarity, because we can see stuff going on, we can see people moving, we can see folks being grabbed and we see rolling. And it's when he is off his feet, that's when the risk of losing control and the risk of something worse happening starts to occur, which can then lead to possible use of weapons, which weren't used in this case. And that's the thing that we're focusing on. What's happening? What does the officer see? What's going on? Why is he doing what he did? That's what we were looking at.
Great, David. So, could you elaborate a little bit about, you know, and I'm, I'm not a police officer, I'm not trained as a police officer, but looking at the standards there, certain things that come clear. One is this idea of establishing control of a situation is an important factor. And, and the other one really comes down to this idea of the officer's ability to command the situation and have those commands be responded. For those of us who are not police officers, in that moment of confusion, you come across a situation, what is, you know, what's the importance of that for the officer? What's our duty as an individual to comply with just the verbal command of a police officer to roll over? Like, why is that so important, I guess, you know, from a legal point of view and what's our duty?
What's the citizen's duty?
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking about, like in making that decision, you know, because he wasn't even a arrest subject, suspect at this point, right? It was just a matter of Officer Blaveld was trying to establish control of the situation through verbal commands. And so, in an ideal situation, like something failed in that, we don't know why, he fell over, but why, you know, just for those of us who weren't police officers at two o'clock in the morning, why is establishing control important and why is applying the verbal commands of a police officer important?
Well, number one, again, as Jonathan pointed out, the call that came over the radio to him was a, he described as panicked and urgent to respond to a fight. And on his way there, by the way, is when he called for backup, is while he was making the, the run from High and Poplar back to the back of the building. So, when, when he gets there, that's the first set of circumstances that he sees that is corroborated by his body cam, is that there are four individuals involved in what he described as, and if corroborated by the video, a, a violent struggle. So, there is a need to get some sort of control over that situation, particularly when there are other people standing by on the sidewalk and the longer that this event is dragging on, it's drawing a bigger and bigger crowd. Once he becomes engaged with Mr. Johnson on the ground, and as we put into the report, weapon retention becomes paramount, because then you really are getting on the border of losing control, losing control of your weapon. You don't know this individual and you don't know any of what might happen. Your goal at that point is to get control of the situation. And if that decision, which is a split-second decision, is made to, "I've got to get this person under control," and that's what the decision that he makes, and then that leads to the struggle on the ground between the two of them, because the other bar staff let go.
And then the officers tried to establish control verbally, but, you know, and, and there's some confusion about how exactly, but there was...
Yes, and that came at different points in time.
Okay.
When he was initially arrived, and again, I want you to remember, these things all happened in seconds. And so, when he first came up and gave verbal commands, then he reached down, became engaged on the ground, Officer Hellworth came, more verbal commands, and then the third officer came, more commands, and then finally the handcuffs. And again, the whole thing lasted twenty seconds, you know, from, from Blaveld coming upon the scene until they finally get him handcuffed. So, that's rapidly evolved. So, we have to look at those circumstances, because that's what the policy and the Supreme Court judge directs us to do.
And I, I want to emphasize, we talked about all this. Amongst other things, there were times when we'd be driving back from these interviews and I'd be giving David what for because I saw something hurt it. And then I said, "Well, Dave, why isn't this the way it is? I don't understand that." We debated this and we, I bet you I looked at these videos ten times, because I wanted to at least satisfy myself that what we were putting in front of you would be our best finish point of what happened and we could support it. We didn't want to give you an opinion that we couldn't support.
Amber?
Yes, I, I do, thank you for this report and for your work on this. One question that I have is that on the bottom of page, it's page six of the report, you mentioned that the two employees who let go of Johnson felt that once the police officer had engaged the subject, their involvement was over and it was okay to let go. My question, and I don't know who, who would best be able to answer this, is related to the relationship between the, the bar and our officers, that it was, they felt it was okay for them to let go. Would it have been better, should they have maintained control then, given the relationship and given that by letting go, it created this precarious situation? I, I was, I was struck by the term, "It was okay," felt it was okay.
Yeah, there's this, there's this, this arrangement that had been made between the police department, maybe the city, I don't know, and, and the bar, to have this officer detailed specifically to that location. But he's on overtime, he's still a police officer. He is not a private citizen, he's not a private employee of the bar. His job is to be there when they need help. And so, he gets this call, this urgent call from this manager and he goes running to the scene to provide assistance. He didn't seek to deputize the private citizens and say, "Okay, now you guys are now part of the police department, so hang on to him and, and I'll wait on my fellow officers to arrive," because as you heard David saying, what's in our report, is that Blaveld called for backup from police officers on his way to the scene. Before he even got there, he had already in his, his mind envisioned something that he, it seemed like he might not be able to control. Otherwise, why call for additional police officers? Just go over, investigate, hopefully resolve the matter. So, he wasn't deputizing anybody. And yet, at the same time, he couldn't say, "Hang on to him," because if he said that and he technically, that could be later than read as deputizing them. And what hap, what if something really serious happened to Johnson? You know, a broken leg, a broken bone, a spine injury. All of a sudden, the city now is on the hook for a, a civil lawsuit for injuries to Johnson because Blaveld deputized these, these private citizens and they were engaged with him at a time when the injury happened. So, was he thinking like that? No, he's probably not a lawyer, so he probably wasn't thinking like we would think. We try to think through all kinds of scenarios just to make sure we understand what, what's going on. But it's a situation where they thought the cavalry had arrived and at least two of them felt like, "All right, he's the guy that we pay to help us, he can take over now because he's actually a member of the police department."
Part of what we saw in the video, Jonathan and I, is that the two bar staff let go. So, we wanted to know, "Why did you let go?" And so, we asked them that question. They weren't directed to let go by Officer Blaveld. They let go on their own because of the, in fact, I think one of them had talked about that he has a, a relative of some kind who's a police officer and that he had learned or understood that, that, "Don't be an active participant as a private citizen unless a police officer has given you some kind of directive." And Blaveld did not direct bar staff to stay involved. They, in their mind, felt this is now a police matter. And this was kind of a little bit of a, of a unicorn in that, again, his job was to come to the aid in case there was a shooting. That was the whole reason for the detail, this wasn't a shooting, this was something different. And now bar staff is, who's in charge of security inside the bar, now we're outside the bar, just off the public sidewalk. So, that's kind of a, and, and that's why, what it appeared to him was exactly what was on his body camera. There was a fight, there's a struggle going on on the ground. And when he comes up, he's got things in his mind, as Jonathan just pointed out, and bar staff who have been struggling with Mr. Johnson earlier than that, I think Jonathan put it well, which is in their minds, the cavalry has arrived, they let go.
Do you have a final one?
Yes, can you also speak to, to the notion that on the one hand, Officer Blaveld felt that there was some urgency enough to call backup, the sense that there would be something that he might not be able to control on his own, but yet still was not planning to effectuate an arrest when he arrived?
Well, because as he immediately comes upon the scene, he's still sorting things out in his mind and we're talking at this point in tenths of a second, and he's not necessarily observing a criminal offense that's happening for him to arrest anybody for. So, as, as we had indicated in our report, we don't believe that he was effectuating an arrest. We believe that he was trying to break up a fight and gain control of the situation. And had things progressed beyond that, then sort things out and determine if anybody needed to be arrested for any kind of offense. So...
Okay.
Thank you.
Which is exactly what happened. The, the officers, after the cavalry did arrive, someone other than Blaveld, there was a discussion about whether or not criminal charges should be filed. And a determination was made with the supervisory officer, Sergeant Hatfield, that, what are the criminal charges? And they discussed those and he ultimately was charged with four criminal violations.
Okay. Mike, did you have any questions?
Yeah, yes, kind of two-part question. So, I want to get a handle. So, it took two Oxford police officers to restrain Mr. Johnson once they got into it on the ground with him.
It's actually a third.
Okay, I knew there were three there, so I wouldn't, didn't know if it was two or if it was three. And you interviewed the bar staff. How panicked were they? I feel like they realized they were in over their heads by a lot when they called for him.
And remember, it's not a "they," it's, it's a "he." One bar staff went on the, the internal Rex walkie-talkie radio that is on the one channel designated to the officer who's on EK. So, it's that one person's, whose radio to Blaveld, that Blaveld responds to. And his impression of what he heard from that one individual was, he describes panicked and urgent.
Okay. All right, you didn't have any? Okay, thank you. You have another one?
Yeah, I have too many to ever go through tonight, but there is one that I wanted to, to ask still. On page ten, part F, of your report, you say, "Johnson's repeated question, 'Why are you doing this?' indicates that he understood the situation." I don't understand how we conclude that from the phrase, "Why are you doing this?" How does the question, "Why are we doing this?" mean he understood? It seems that the question's nature is that he did not understand what was going on.
Well, if someone puts me in handcuffs, then I certainly should know that I'm in Well, if someone puts me in handcuffs, then I certainly should know that I'm in handcuffs. And there's no indication that he didn't know he wasn't in handcuffs. There were a number of officers around when he was saying, why are you guys doing this? So, you're right, I cannot read his mind to say that he recognized that he might have engaged in some criminal conduct that might get him in trouble. Was he talking about the physical struggle with the bar staff down the street before they hit the ground? I don't know. Was he talking about when he was engaged with Blauvelt? I don't know. Was he talking about when Officer Helworth showed up and attempted to get him in handcuffs and he and Blauvelt couldn't handcuff him? I don't know. Was he talking about when Sergeant Hoos showed up and it took three officers to double cuff him? I don't know. I don't know. All we know is that he's saying, why are you doing this? Which implies that he thinks something's happening to him that shouldn't be happening. But we have all the other set of facts from the video surrounding it indicating that we have some idea as to why this is happening. So my point is, is he complaining because he had body strikes? Is he complaining about knee strikes? Is he complaining about all the other things that were going on? We don't know. And it goes to your point about the fact that we didn't interview him. But we have explained that and I'm not quite sure how we can explain it anymore than what we've done. We couldn't interview him. Now that his trial is over, of course we can interview him. Will he talk to us? I don't know. Do you want a supplemental report?
The only thing I would have liked most is to maybe have a witness list of people you interviewed and who you didn't interview and what position they had in this whole altercation. Because otherwise it's just for people...
We can tell you that right now.
Yeah, I know, but if I were to deliver a report like this, it would be really important to know who I talked to when I came up with a narrative and a conclusion, right? That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen, thank you. Stick around. At this time, if anyone from the public has a question or a comment that you would like to make, please try to keep those to three minutes, according to council rules. We'll have a timer. I'll give you one of these first to say you've got a minute left. And then I'll say verbally that you need to stop when you get to three minutes. So just give us your name and where you live and we're welcome you to speak to council.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Got it, okay. Anne Fure, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. And I serve as the Secretary of the Oxford Branch of the NAACP. Our branch was asked to take a role in addressing concerns about the handling of this situation. Four members of our executive committee met with four members of city staff on January 3rd to express a number of concerns about this situation. And we agreed to wait until the completion and public presentation of the report that we just received. We also expressed similar concerns at the February 15th meeting of the PCRRC. And President Fran Jackson and I met with Larry Nadler, Chair of the PCRRC, and identified some sixteen sets of questions that were for us unanswered at that point. We worked out a plan to make sure that all of those questions would be addressed eventually. We've read the report and we've heard two sets of recommendations that were articulated here tonight. The, there was part of that second recommendation on page 18 referred to the confusion of the public and the need for better communication about the nature and the extent of evidence collected or reviewed by the chief before signing off on any use of force reports. We are not confused. This is not about improved PR. This is about the need for additional training, attention to dynamics in the community that lead to individual entitlement escalating to violence, and a community call for engagement. We are asking for improved procedures. I personally have tremendous respect for Chief Jones and am glad to hear that a number of recommendations have already been made. We'll continue to work with Chair Nadler to get the rest of our questions answered. And you're going to hear from three of my colleagues on our board that we do indeed still have significant questions. We are looking for justice and we are reasonable actors and subjects who want to play a part in determining outcomes as the council's recommended. And we speak to make sure that there are better outcomes in the future. Thank you. Council needs to give direct direction to staff about what needs to happen in this situation to implement the recommendations.
Thank you, Anne. Hi Fran.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fran Jackson, I live at 114 Country Club Drive. I've been a resident of Oxford for fifty-five years and I'm the President of Oxford NAACP. Now, I would like to thank Anne for her clarity in laying out the role of the NAACP and many members of the community that we have taken in addressing the concerns about the handling of the November 18th incident. We want justice. We want our city to be one of the best cities for anyone to live. One of the NAACP recommendations was for the external independent investigation be made and followed by a public presentation of the report. And this has happened. Thank you, City Manager Doug Elliott and the city for having this external investigation and having a discussion tonight. After reading the report, which is quite long, I'm not a police officer, but I do read very well. We have some dissatisfaction and unanswered concerns. One of our major concerns in the report is that it's one-sided. It only states what was in the police reports from the police perspective. Were there no disagreements among the witnesses, all the witnesses' accounts and the police reports? Were there no disagreements? To me, the video clearly indicates difference in the accounts of the witnesses and police. And some of the accounts that were in that report and explanation given tonight. Was Mr. Johnson interviewed for this report? That has already been brought up, we were very concerned about that. Okay, we understand, he could not speak, but there should have been some indication that it was more than just reports. And your decisions in terms of what looked like to you that you could arrive or what the other persons were thinking. There was a lack of communications and proper reporting of the incident by the police and this should have been investigated more. Accurate reports and data is very important for clarification, accountability, and transparency. Another area of concern was the police body camera. Why was the officer's microphone off on the body cam? The lack of transparency and accountability creates problems. To ensure the success of police cameras, police should have no discretion
We need to wrap up.
When they turn the videos off and the microphones off.
Thank you, Fran.
If an officer perceives the need of force, cams, video, and audio should be on before force encounters. For truth and greater accountability in the use of police cams, there should be specific protocols and policies in place.
Thank you, Fran.
Oh.
Your time's up, yeah, I'm sorry.
But let me just say this, my other members will address this in more detail. I do have respect for our police chief and I have respect for this council. And I will end it right now.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got somebody else coming up. Oh, she's leaving, okay. I think it's you. Welcome.
Hi, Linda Musmisi Kimble, live on Melinda Drive here in Oxford. I'm wearing my NAACP hat, but I am speaking as an individual. I had hoped that the report from the Use of Force Policy Compliance Investigation, as it was titled, would have addressed more of our concerns or answered some of our questions and had led to policy improvements and corrections. Concerns and questions like this one. If Officer Blauvelt initiated the physical engagement, would that affect whether his actions were within departmental guidelines? For instance, a duty for Officer Blauvelt to choose tactics to de-escalate instead? And this one. Was Mr. Johnson able to comply with commands given while being held down and constrained? May an officer respond with force to a lack of compliance when the individual is physically unable to comply? And this one. What is the police protocol governing a situation in which an officer, having been called, arrives to a scene of a subdued subject with previously disruptive, but now under the control of non-officers restraints? What is the officer's responsibility and next course of action? If already restrained, is there an opportunity for a protocol to de-escalate? And this one. Are there no significant recommendations for better policy that could have been provided with this report? I believe I understand why questions and concerns like these were not considered, addressed, nor responded to. The title of this report is Use of Force Policy Compliance Investigation. And that means, and quoting, chapter and verse from the Oxford Police Department Policy Manual. Quote, "The reasonableness of force will be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene at the time of the incident." A police officer's actions must be judged from his perspective on the scene at the time of the event, rather than the 2020 vision of hindsight. Now, reasonable officers may improvise their response with reasonable use of a device or method. And I quote again, "When use of force is justified, the subject of the force will typically dictate the amount of force used on them." And quote, "The Oxford policy on use of force complies with the prevailing law articulated by the United States Supreme Court."
Thank you, Linda.
I suppose you could call it a law, but the 1989 Ohio case that reaffirms qualified immunity as a legal principle is based on the 1982 Harlow versus Fitzgerald Supreme Court case. A coalition of organizations
Time's up.
Like the NAACP are working to repeal the use of qualified immunity. Four states have abolished qualified immunity as a legal principle operating in their states. And twenty-five states have legislation in the works to reform or repeal qualified immunity. And Congressional HR 1470, if passed, would eliminate the defense of qualified immunity in civil actions for deprivation of rights in U.S. law.
Linda, I've now given you a four.
I understand. In this case, however, I think our public money for an independent investigation was not well spent. And we do not have any answers or resolutions to our concerns or our questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for indulging my excesses.
That's all right.
Okay.
I do, we do our best. Okay. Ms. Cummings, welcome.
Vanessa Cummings. I'm gonna do, cover three quick things. One...
She lives in Oxford on...
Oh, I live in Oxford, Ohio.
On Marty Court, okay.
The former house of his mother-in-law.
So I knew where she lived.
That's not in my time.
No, that's not in her time, start her over.
Yeah, don't start me yet, give me time. Okay, first, I think one of you all covered the fact that there was a statement in the report that said that what Johnson knew. But then you all stated in your response that you didn't know what he knew. You assumed what he knew, but you wrote it as if it was a statement of fact of what he knew or what he heard. That is something that we can't do. You can't conclude what somebody had in their mind and what somebody heard when you haven't talked to them to know what they heard and what they comprehended. Number two, it says on page six that the bars, two of the bar staff members let go. But it says on page seven of the report that Blauvelt again gave verbal commands to roll over, give me your hands, Helworth had engaged Johnson by pulling on his right arm. And it goes on and says, at this point, bar staff again let go except the one employee. So two let go, but they resumed holding him while he's still being told to comply and not comply. But he is again restrained by three people. So if three people are holding me down, I really can't do what you're telling me to do if it's different than the position they have me in. So I think that that needs to be clarified. The next question I wanted to say is in the mindset of somebody who's being restrained by civilians and you're there on the ground and you're being held and then police come and it feels like they've joined in. You feel like you're in a life or death situation, especially as a black person. You feel like you're a life or death, I gotta fight or flight, I don't know if I'm gonna live through this incident or not. So to conclude that his mindset was he was just not complying and he was bigger and stronger is not necessarily an accurate conclusion. The other thing that we're concerned about is the NAACP and I'm speaking on behalf of the NAACP. The officers, all the officers who knew that this third video was not uploaded and none of those officers put in their reports that there was a video not uploaded. That's a problem when all of them knew, none of them put it up. And then they didn't disclose the head blows until the video was released that showed the head blows. Then the report was amended to add that. So those are things that I shared with the chief when the NAACP met. He needs to be aware that these are concerns if his officers knew something existed and didn't tell them. They put out a statement saying they didn't have the video to find out. They did have the video the whole time, but none of the officers who knew about it disclosed it. That's a problem. So we're requesting a public meeting with PCRRC, the Civil Rights Commission, the Student Community Relations Commission, to allow the community to discuss and understand what's happened and how to improve relations with the police department, our students, and our community. And we also are looking for the review of the hiring and the use of policies within the department to tighten up internal processes, procedures, and have better communications with the community. So that's what we're concerned about. And we do respect you, chief, we know you, but we just want you to have your back covered. And we want to make sure the city's covered and we want to make sure everybody has justice. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. Would anyone else like to address counsel on this? Come on up. Come all the way up, yep. We're glad to have you. But I understand sometimes you need to get the right... So while he's, that's okay, while he's getting that, if there's anybody else who wants to speak, when he gets done, raise your hand so I know that there's somebody else who wants to speak. Thank you.
All right, so...
Just give us your name and where you live.
My name is Rajeshi Banerjee, I'm a student and resident here. What was the name of the person who spoke before me?
Vanessa Cummings.
Vanessa Cummings. Vanessa Cummings, thank you so much for that amazing summary. And yeah, I agree completely. So one of you two said you spent ten, you watched the video... So one of you two said you spent 10, you watched the video at least 10 times. I watched the video at least 100 times. And let me start by saying that I and many and others in the community disagree with the charges that Devin Johnson was convicted of. And for good reason, considering the video evidence clearly shows that he acted in self-defense. Claims wide-belted county sheriff, prosecutor Moser, and now Williamson Hollingsworth that Matthew Blaveld's use of force was justifiable in the situation are utterly basis, baseless. It is widely known that hard blows to the head can be fatal. I heard them multiple times called body blows during the speaking. I think we all saw the video. Those were to the head and from the back while Devin was restrained on the ground. I was, I've been working directly with Devin and his family, organizing students because we've seen this video and we saw how messed up it was. And we're demanding justice. The footage shows Devin being restrained by multiple individuals when apprehended, like Vanessa said. Contrary to what the claims were, they both let go. They were both still holding on to Devin and causing him to be moved around when Officer Blaveld put all of his weight on him and then stumbled a little bit because Devin was being moved around by multiple people and then immediately punched Devin in the back of the head multiple times. We can see what happens to the community and Devin posed no risk to Matthew Blaveld's safety. Blaveld's failure to de-escalate the situation or even clear others off Devin before attempting to forcefully pin him must be understood as negligence. The consequences of Blaveld's negligence, the fear of his own gun cannot be used as an excuse to then commit extreme violence against a restrained individual who has shown no intention of harm. Police officers cannot awkwardly assert themselves into chaotic compromised positions and use extreme violence the second they get spooked. They can't attack restrained innocent people who aren't even under arrest. As an informed and conscious member of the community, I cannot tolerate police officers employing violence, excessive force, and shifting blame onto the victim. This is a matter of our community's safety and our fundamental human rights. I demand, as any reasonable observer should, that Matthew Blaveld be held legally accountable for his actions and barred from ever serving as a police officer again. This calls for the appointment of an external special prosecutor, which City Council should officially request of the Attorney General. Justice for Devin. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give you a chance, Linda. Welcome. It's really not so bad coming up to talk to counsel. It's, it's a friendly spot, I think.
I'm Steve Schnabel, 44 Autumn Drive, an Oxford resident since 1985. Acquainted with many of you and Chief Jones really appreciate the work that he and his folks do. I think most of us read the school year weekly summaries of what our police officers go through in protecting this community. And we know that many of the instances happen on the weekends and happen because of the bars. Had I been involved in this situation, I was a 120-pound weakling when I was in college, so it wouldn't have been me. I was not a football player. I was not a gym goer. But my mom, 105 pounds, my dad having been dead for 10 years by the time I was in college and an only child, if that had been me, I would have gotten it 10 times worse from my mother when I got home. As it says on page five, and I apologize to many of my friends back here who have differences of perspective. I, I was disappointed that there wasn't a comment about the use of force rather than focus on the policy, but now I understand a little more about what the charge was. And I believe counsel was responsible for the charge. I may be wrong. But at the top of page six, it says that Mr. Johnson moved towards to grab the gate before it closed shut when he was outside. So he was trying to enter the patio through the exit gate. That's where my mom would have boxed my ears. Nothing would have happened had the young man followed reasonable and appropriate behavior. But we realize that this is a college-age person in a college-age crowd, and compliance is not high on that list amongst many of the people that I know in that age range, including my own grandsons. I've not been a police officer, but the fear every night going out and running into any type of situation that you can't control easily, a gun could be taken, officers have been shot by someone with whom they were dealing with. I can't imagine why the young people who were the bar attendants would not step back. And so I think we've gotten overly concerned. And I do believe that the courts have found the young man guilty of some behaviors that were criminal.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address this issue? Okay, I want to thank all of you for coming, for.
I thought we were gonna hear from Chief Jones.
We are.
Okay, just checking.
I first want to thank them.
It looks like there's one more person.
Okay. Now, next time, you raise your hand if you want to talk, because otherwise I don't know when you're done.
Understood. And forgive me, this is not a prepared speech, but I will keep it brief.
It's quite all right. You don't have to have a prepared speech. Give us your name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Dylan Elvin. I live on South College Avenue, and I'm originally from Columbus, Ohio, so I'm an Ohio native. I worked at Brick Street for two years, so I am a former Brick Street employee and I have a unique perspective with that. Having watched the video a lot of times, I, unlike most, can identify almost anyone, everyone in that video. And I also have some things, I guess, about what has been said so far. So I want to say, to a point that I think you two made, you had said that one of the Brick Street employees' uncle was a police officer. And Mr. Bracken, I appreciate your perspectives, trying to question some of their, some of their report. I too believe that it's a little bizarre that the people that were interviewed were mostly police officers and Brick Street employees, especially when, like commented, one of the Brick Street employees' uncles, or I, I know personally because I know the person, his uncle is a police officer. Secondly, that person who you had said, whose uncle was a police officer, you said that they do not like to get involved in things as they know that the police should handle it first. That person's the same person that dragged this student out of the bar aggressively. And of course, the investigation was not necessarily around the Brick Street employee conduct, but the fact that this was what led up to it makes it paramount, makes it impossible to ignore. And the fact that we can see in the video more or less what happened in the multiple angles that we can see, and that Brick Street has released statements with what we know now to be either lies or mistruths, makes it odd that the investigation took part only with Brick Street employees and police officers. Second, I know Mr. Johnson was involved in a criminal suit. I, as a person, am in contact with his attorney, and though his attorney has not said that he would have said yes to, and then a query from you two, your use of the word "might", and I quote, "Mr. Johnson was not interviewed because his attorney, his attorney might not allow it." That "might" tells me that either there was not attempt made or that you did not mind to focus on that. And that concerns me as an individual, that the people we are paying money to, all due respect, did not reach out to Devin Johnson for comment. Further, as a personal anecdote, because I worked at Brick Street, I know the people involved in that incident. And they are, you know, they, I, I understand what working at Brick Street is like. I worked there for two years. I understand the pressures with that. And I also have been a member of Oxford for, for four years or so now. I have had interactions with the police, not myself. I had a friend that was roofied at Brick Street Bar. And the police who we called to help with our friend that was roofied caused more harm to us than did good in the situation. The medics in that situation did more help than, than the officers that were supposed to help coordinate the situation did.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments.
Final thought, I can agree that maybe Blaveld as an individual may not be the problem. You said the guidelines follow exactly for what the violence may have been. But if the guidelines permit the punching of a restrained individual in the back of the head, maybe it's not the individual's fault. Maybe the guidelines themselves need to be reviewed and changed because I know personally, physical violence in the back of the head does not seem like the best policy to hold as a police department or as a city. But thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else? See, we did have more. Okay. That's fine. We want everybody to be able to speak.
Pat Mead, live on Lantern Ridge. I already spoke to Chief Jones tonight, so he knows what I think of you. I don't need to say that publicly necessarily. But it kind of saddens me, the situation's really sad because we have spent so much time in Oxford trying to improve police community relations. We formed years ago the Police Community Relations and Review Commission with Mr. Nadler is now the chair of. And that commission and the police department worked very hard to improve trust between the police department and the community. And I think this incident has really taken us back, and, and that's kind of sad. And I think it has taken us back because of some mistakes in the police department that showed up in that report about handling evidence and that the chief should have been told things that apparently the chief wasn't told. And I, as a citizen, when I read that, think, well, what were these officers thinking not telling him these things? It makes, it makes me worry a little, even though I have great faith, trust, and thanks for our police department here. And that handling of evidence is extremely troubling. The report itself is also, as a community member, when I read it, I felt like it was one-sided. Now, I realize the individual could not be interviewed. He's up for criminal charges. But boy, just saying that would have been helpful. We could not interview the individual because he's up for charges would have told me as a citizen that there was an attempt to get all sides of the story. I think it was one-sided because one thing I read that really troubled me was that on numerous occasions, three, maybe four, it was described as he was bigger, stronger, and younger. He was bigger, stronger, and younger, and he was bigger, stronger, and younger. And the officer is better trained, and there was more than one person. It just, using that phrase over and over again gives the impression that you've taken a side. And that, that's troubling. It decreases trust. I think the other issue that decreases trust is some of the things about the body cam. And I know we worked on that in the police commission when I was a member. And it's troubling that, that maybe they're still not being used properly the way they should be. I hope that the PCRCRC has some kind of public forum about this. I hope that we continue to listen to citizens, that we continue to listen to the police officers who are out there doing this tough job. So I hope, Mr. Nadler, that this is given to you and the community continues to get answers and maybe we can rebuild that trust that we've worked very hard to build up here in Oxford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last call. No, you're not. You're just moving. Okay. Chief, you can walk up as I, again, just finish saying thank you all for coming. We appreciate everybody's opinion and we appreciate you taking the time to be here. And I know it's not always easy standing up and talking to counsel, but we appreciate very much hearing from you. Hi, Chief.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Mead said a lot of what I want to say. A lot of these questions, I feel like I could stand up here and answer. I don't think we need a special counsel to answer some of them. You know, I've had time to digest that report. I could talk about the operation of the body cam. I think there's some confusion. I don't know that everybody's actually watched the unredacted body cams or unredacted security videos. Had you attended the trial, a lot of that information would have been answered for you, I believe. Mr. Johnson, we did get his side of the story because he sat right there and testified during his criminal trial, and that was eye-opening as well. So we heard that side, the jury heard that side, and again, found him guilty of resisting arrest. So the, the one gentleman who believes that Officer Blaveld should be fired, that's, that's absurd. Officer Blaveld is a veteran officer who's served his community very well. He, he made a split-second decision. The, the real, the real problem in this whole situation was the miscommunication internally that involved me. It's not that officers didn't necessarily seek me out and tell me. They did their reports. And then assumptions were made, attention to detail was not followed. And then, you know, on Christmas Eve, when a TikTok video is released disparaging the police department, putting our phone number up there, telling people to call because of this, it, it set off a chain of events that we had trouble reacting to. Lieutenant Robinson and I, who, he had not seen that video either, he's our Internal Affairs Investigation in Gator, sorry. You know, we're in here on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, and, and we're trying to respond to this. So yes, there were mistakes made in all this. I don't think Officer Blaveld made any mistakes, and I think that's what this use-of-force investigation shows. You may disagree with it, but that is why the Supreme Court says it has to come from the perspective of a reasonable police officer on the scene, not someone at City Council who has never probably been in a fight before for their life. So anyway, so that, that is, but there, there are other things. I think the concept of doing a community forum is great. That's exactly what PCRCRC is for. So come to that meeting. We'll talk to Mr. Nadler. We can have a lot of these questions answered. And, and, you know, I, some of it, I, I think is a misunderstanding or that you don't have all the information. Some of it is, yeah, we messed up. I, I, there's some human error involved, and we want to do better next time. You know, we talked about it being one-sided. That was brought up during the trial, too. And as was eloquently pointed out by the prosecutor, is we talked to the people involved in it. We brought forth the witnesses who saw it. We don't have the names of other witnesses. There may have been other witnesses there. We asked, if you look at our public statements, we asked people to come forward with video, with statements. Nobody did. And everybody's using the term that he was restrained, and that was refuted during the trial by testimony by both Brick Street employees, by the officers, by the video itself. I, I disagree with Counselor Bracken. I can clearly see Officer Blaveld pulled down on top of him, lose his feet, lose control of the situation. He, you can see in a body cam video, Mr. Johnson reaching up to grab him. He has no reason to lie about that situation. So anyway, so, so again, I think there's a lot more to be had. I think there's a misunderstanding that officers use equal force. Officers are not afforded the opportunity to lose a fight. We do not lose. We go home. We will elevate our force above that person's force. We don't use equal force. We use a higher level of force. We went over that in the trial, what the options were to the officer and, and what options he chose. And it was a distraction technique by punches to the neck that made him, made Mr. Johnson stop doing what he was doing. And, and then they were able to, that was effective. And then when he continued to resist, knee strikes eventually were effective to get him into handcuffs. So again, where this went wrong was that back on November 18th in my initial use-of-force review, I should have seen that video. And we would have done our own, upon seeing that video, rather than checking just, just that the use of force was justified, we would have done our own investigation. We would have saved the city money. I don't know whether people would have believed our investigation, but we would have done that and been more thorough and, and likely would have come up with the same outcome. But I think, I think continued conversation, I can answer many more of those questions about, especially about the handling of the evidence and the errors that went wrong during that. So I think Mr. Mead's comment about using the PCRCRC as the forum is the proper one.
Yeah, that's the next step.
And avoiding the community stakeholders to that. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. I do think that the next step then is for PCRCRC to.
I thought we were gonna ask Chief Jones some questions.
You can, but.
I want to start heading on.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to make a couple of comments. So when the decision was made to retain special counsel, we knew that that would not be the end of the process. we knew that that would not be the end of the process. In fact, when we met with the representatives of the NAACP, we had a meeting at the PCRC committee. It was very clear, it made that very clear, that would not be the end of the process. It was also well-known, at least within our small group, and certainly special counsel was aware, that given the timing of our desire to have the report done, that Devin Johnson was unlikely to have gone, been gone to trial. So that that piece wasn't going to be there, which was another reason why there would be follow-up. We can now order the transcript from the trial, that can be layered into the conversation and, and move forward accordingly. I do think it's important to reemphasize, the law is the law. I mean, we, we don't have the ability to change it here in Oxford, Ohio. Now, that said, the Connor versus Graham standard has been under attack for many years. That is a continuing national dialogue. And one of the things in Oxford can do is try to decide whether or not it wants to be part of that dialogue. I also want to point out that one of the, the word irony was used, and there is, there are certain things about this that I are, that are ironic. I think one of the things that gets lost in the discussion when it relates to the fact that, that, as the chief has acknowledged, there was an internal mistake on the handling of evidence to get to him. There was no mistake in the handling of the evidence as it related to the rights of the criminal defendant. The process played out at as exactly as it was supposed to. The evidence came to light because it was produced in the ordinary course that it was required to be produced to make sure that an individual criminal defendant's rights were protected under Ohio and United States Constitution. So, the highest standards of the, the ethics of law enforcement were met at that level. And I think it's important to keep that in mind. The mistake was the internal one that related to the review of policy. The last thing I want to talk about is the, the discussion of whether audio was on or off as it relates to body cam and other things. The special counsel saw unredacted video. The video that was produced to the public by law had to be redacted. Once we are able, under Ohio law, to produce unredacted and full video, which would include audio, everyone will hear that, which was also another reason why we knew there would be continued follow-up because this report was never intended to end the conversation. In fact, were I a betting man, I would have bet a lot of money that many people would not have been satisfied with the report because by definition, these matters require deeper and in-depth discussion with a community that cares about these issues. So, I, I would ask people to, to be patient, trust this process that we're going through. It has been open, I do not like the word transparent because transparent suggests that somebody's going to withhold information. But the goal has been to make sure that the community has the information necessary to have an informed discussion. And if there isn't information that we have and we can get it, we will. So, thank you.
Jason, you had something you wanted to.
Yeah, I was wondering, Chief, if you could speak to body cam audio and how, in some of the videos, it seems some officers are turning them off while others are leaving them on in conversations that seem like they might have been important. And also in Vincent himself. And also, this is something when we were doing, we were talking about purchasing body cams, I had requested that we have longer audio available. And that would have been really nice for this incident.
Sure. And some of the questions about the body cam, you know, the reason I would like to have those further discussions in PCRC is because I want to understand, like, when we're talking about and, and ask those questions back of what we're talking about. Because the body cam operation, the audio, what it does, it has a 30-second look-back period. So, when an officer activates their body cam by pushing it on the front, it does a 30-second look-back of only video, we can't capture the audio before that. So, in this instance, you see Officer Blaveld running to the scene and you hear nothing. And his first verbal commands are not captured because he hasn't yet activated it. In the trial, we, we, you saw on the surveillance camera, which actually does have audio, you could hear some of those commands on the surveillance camera, even though they're not captured on body cam. So, that was, that was interesting because I, I was not aware of that either. But then there's other times in the, in the whole series of body cams where officers mute their microphone. So, that's within policy, we have a whole body cam policy and procedural order about when they should mute their microphone, when, when they shouldn't. So, that, I don't have that policy in front of me, but essentially, when you're having a conversation with a supervisor away from the scene, you're not supposed to record that conversation between two police officers, especially when you're trying to sort out, you know, what charges and all that. There's a, you know, there's other times where I, I've noticed that some officers muted, others had not muted because they're, they're still filming. So, you still capture the audio, but, so that, that's a whole nother procedural order that we could go through and, and look at and examine. But there is, there is good reason that you don't want officers recording conversations with other police officers, especially surreptitiously, so.
So, I'm just, I guess what I'm saying, what I would like to ask is that I think this is going to be a multi-stage conversation that could talk about a whole range of operational issues. I guess for the sake of keeping the conversation, like, if we could offer our thoughts on this report, and I think some of this stuff is going to be stuff we're going to continue to talk through and work through. But I guess trying to put a little battery around the conversation so that we can take it to the next phase would be nice.
Yeah, I, well, I do think we need to move on with our business because there's, there is other stuff that we need to be doing. I'm going to allow comments. And, but I think the next step is going to be the PCRC, and then they can get into more of the details that a lot of people are concerned about and, and have questions about.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And I would say to that note, whenever this all first was breaking out, that was the initial thought. It needs to go to the PCRC. And then you were told, hold on, let's wait for city council to do it. So, it's a little hard to say, like, wait, now it's going to go over there. I just feel like we're playing a little tennis match. But the person that used to work at Brick Street, I definitely want to talk to you. I can't remember your name, but please talk to me after. I have, the, some of the questions I have is, how many people come in through the exit? Like, I'm assuming it's a lot. It's a lot, right? It's a lot. So, the, it's just like, it's, we see it, it's crazy over there. Like, people are probably coming and going, and then as I read through the paragraph, and it talks about even like the description of struggle or a fight, those are pretty strong words, I, I think. Even as y'all were, like, obviously, we talked about the fact that Mr. Johnson wasn't even interviewed. But even with those words, I'm like, that's pretty partial, especially from the people that you interviewed. And I, and then I was like, well, what rights do the bouncers have? And so, whenever I look up, like, bouncer liability, it's like, they have, they, they can't touch you, right? They can't touch you unless you touch them. This person was touched, but then it goes into what is reasonable restraint? And it's just, I'm not a judge, I'm not a jury, that, I'm assuming will have its own day. I'm assuming, looking at the people in the back that know Mr. Johnson. But the, the, this is so nuanced, right? And I think that what the reports had come out with, you're kind of in this impossible situation because you don't even get to take into effect the whole perspective, right? You don't get to look at what happens at the bar, why this guy is being, like, why this becomes so aggressive so quickly. And then also, hearing from the chief, I mean, we've had meetings about this, and hearing from him and the perspective of he, this police officer really thought there was something crazy happening, right? And I'm not justifying it at all, but it is, it's, it's challenging of, you see, if I'm just looking at this as a group of people, there is one person that is being assaulted, or maybe they're assaulting each other, whatever, however that becomes determined. So, that's the challenge to me is, what opportunities were there to de-escalate from that situation? So, what can we, that conversation should involve the bar involved or all bars? And then I also looked up, okay, Oxford, Ohio assault bouncer, what kind of stories are out there? And so, of course, it's a lot of this one with this particular situation. But then there's also in 2019, man charged after punching bouncer in Oxford bar. The, the bouncer didn't even hit this person. Actually, that person in 2019 said a lot of racial slurs at the police officer. So, that it's just, there aren't that many articles about this, and I know this is happening a lot. So, the bigger conversation should be, and I, and the, I, the police is, I think the police chief is trying his best to correct the problems that we're identifying within the own, their own service. And to the person who posted the video, this might, you prob, you may never have known, right? Like, this might not, never have come to the light of day. So, it's an important conversation that we're having, that we need to make sure that we're making sure all the people are involved, including the bar, whenever we have this community conversation.
Do you have any final comments? I'm going to move down the road.
Okay. One of the things I love about this community is that we, we do want to have conversations, and the conversation has already started tonight. And there are people in this room that I respect and that I have relationships with who have different perspectives, and it hasn't changed my respect or relationship with any of the people in this room. And I think that's the mark of a, of a strong and vibrant and healthy community. So, I want to thank everyone who came to speak tonight. A few things, many years ago, I think Chief Jones, it was 2015, there was a group on campus that had a community dialogue with police and community members. It was called Disarmed or something like that, it's on my resume somewhere. But we had every police chief, Miami, Oxford, and township, and members of the Miami community. And it was a wonderful dialogue. It wasn't long enough, we probably should have had more in that time. But I would be happy to facilitate something like that again because I think that fruitful things can come out of that. I have a brother who's a police officer, and so I spoke with him about some of these instances, this situation. And he shared with me, from his perspective, some of what we've heard tonight, which is that as an officer who has weapons on him, when he feels like he's losing control, regardless of how or why he got there, his first priority is to regain control so that his weapon is not taken from him, so that he or others cannot be hurt. And I, I respect and trust my brother and believe him when he says that that's an important part of, of his job as a police officer. I also understand as a black woman, how painful it is to read how strong and powerful and physical somebody is, Mr. Johnson is, even though it's true that he was younger and stronger than Officer Blaveld, it still hearkens back to something that for many black people can be painful, this, this idea of the, the superhuman, the super-strong black person. And that, that, I think, resonated in a painful way with a lot of people in this community. When I think about this, I think about facts, findings, and feelings. So, the facts were presented, the findings were reached. And there are still feelings that are lingering that we all need to deal with as a community. And we cannot stop engaging in the conversation around those feelings and changes that could come as a result of them. I specifically want to address something that was mentioned at the last PCRC meeting. And I want to address the statement that was made by the public because I know it's not an isolated perspective in our community. There was an individual who spoke and who gave an example of going to a bar and listening to a band playing and going up to the band members and saying that he thought their instruments were out of tune. And the band said to him, what business do you have telling us how our instruments should sound? You're not a musician, you're not a producer, you don't play, you don't practice. And he used that as a way to say that if you're not a police officer, if you don't train to be a police officer, or if you're not out in the street doing the work of a police officer, you have no business ever questioning what police officers do. And I take issue with that statement strongly because to whom much is given, much is required, and with great power comes great responsibility. And we know that police officers have a lot of power and a lot of responsibility in our community. And I think the vast majority of them manage that power and responsibility well. But I think it is a mistake for us to suggest that if you're not an officer, you have no right to question, to ask for information about what officers are doing because that argument doesn't fly with any other profession. I want you to imagine going to a pharmacist, and the pharmacist accidentally or negligently gives you the wrong medication, and something happens to you or your family member. Nobody would say that if you're not a pharmacist, you do not have a right to question what that pharmacist did. So, I don't think it's wrong for us to ask questions, I don't think it's wrong for us to demand some answers and to work with our local law enforcement to get those answers. I do want to say one thing, I think that even if the TikTok video had not been released, in the weekly statements that the, or report that our police department puts out, you will see that there was a report mentioned about the arrest that night. It doesn't give all of the details, it doesn't come with video, but if you read the report from that week, there was a statement about somebody being arrested outside of Brick Street and charged with assault. So, we do get that information, we just don't always have the video evidence related to any incident, every incident that occurs in Oxford.
Thank you.
And can I clarify on that? That you obviously knew it happened, but you didn't get to see all of the angles, is what I meant to say, just to clarify.
Jason.
Thank you. I would echo a lot of those sentiments, but there's not enough time. I had a number of questions, I'll turn them into three quick recommendations for discussion at PCRC. One is, I would like longer prior audio on our body cams because it provides crucial context and evidence that could help answer questions in situations like this. We definitely need to document in our reports the number of pieces of evidence we have and how long they are, regardless of the type of evidence. And one thing I believe I gathered from the videos was that Officer Blaveld was asking to take some of the witness statements and might have been involved in gathering some of the evidence in terms of videos and stuff like that. We should probably think about having a policy in which if there's a use of force, the officer involved the use of force isn't in charge of gathering any of the pieces of evidence related to it. And so, I hope those are some discussion topics going forward. Thanks.
Very helpful, thanks.
So, I do want to thank everyone for coming out and paying attention to this. I mean, I think all of us, including the police chief, with the exception of people involved, found out about this basically the same way, which is seeing a video on social media. And that video was, you know, really upsetting. And I will say that the circumstance here is, is an upsetting circumstance. I think it's super upsetting for Devin Johnson. You know, I think that he would go back and do things differently if he could on that night. I don't know whether Officer Blaveld, I mean, he, he did not do anything wrong, but if things could have been done differently that didn't involve the, the body blows, I suspect, you know, could people have handled the, the evidence? And I think that hindsight is 2020. And we, and we can learn from that 2020 hindsight, but I, I think that, like, when it comes to this, and I, and I really like, I watched the video and I was upset, but I tried to reserve judgment because I just didn't know. You know, there was so much I didn't know. And whether or not we believe, you know, whatever we believe about the depth of the investigation, the investigate, you know, the, the, the outside counsel has done more investigation, talked to more people than I have. They have looked at the video more often than I have, so I am going to defer to, to their findings. It's not that I'm doing so uncritically, but it's in the same way that the standards for the use of force, that, you know, it's clear that those standards, this was a narrow investigation, whether right or, it wasn't a question of right or wrong, it was a question of was the policy followed? And according to the standards as set out by the policy and affirmed by the Supreme Court, they, they were. Again, 2020 hindsight, could there have been a different way of doing something? That wasn't the question, the question was. And, and those policies are deferential to the police officer's perspective. And, and at one level, we could agree with, disagree with that, but if you've ever been uptown at 1:30 at night, you know, I think that if I were a police officer in that position, I would want some deference, the standards to my judgment, in terms of what am I thinking based on the information that I have? And I think based on the information at that time, a situation, I mean, a lot we could critique. I don't know about the, the relationship between the bar and, and people on the ground in a fight, but to the degree that situation was out of control and the officer was trying to re-establish control and their weapon was at play, I, I think that there was a reason why the standards seemed not unreasonable. But, you know, what I really appreciate is that, that, you know, there, there was a review from the, the county prosecutor, but was a, a review from the, the county prosecutor about was there a crime here committed? And the answer was no. There was, there, there's a separate trial in terms of Mr. Johnson, and that was his judicial proceedings. We have an outside, those things, we have, I feel like, you know, I'm grateful that we've done these things methodically, so we can know as best we can. But I think Mr. Conard's right, you know, those things are kinda technical things, you know, like was the use of force policy, was the, the, the evidence handled in a proper way? That, you know, a separate proceeding looked at Mr. Johnson, whether did he committed a crime according, but I do think the conversation, you know, there is bigger conversation about healing and trust, uh, that I think that we need to move forward. And I think, I hope that that conversation can include recognition that there are good perspectives, and that's what I really wanna thank, and you know, the, the, the recognition, the conversation is a really reasonable one in the community. And ultimately, I think Mr. Johnson, he had a judicial proceeding, whether he got justice or not, I don't know, but, um, Skumming's talked about the idea of justice for the community, and I think justice for the community is gonna be a longer-term process of, of, of reflecting on what we've learned, using the hi, the 2020 hindsight, to think about all these things. And I think, uh, Chief Jones has set us on a path for that, the PCRC is gonna continue with this. And so I'm grateful that we have the structures we have in place, particularly for moments like this, that are sad, upsetting, and confusing. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you again, everybody who's come, and, um, I think the next step will, will be at the PCRC. Um, and I wanna thank especially the NAACP for your responsible and very, uh, pointed and, and interested approach. Uh, I think that you formed a very, um, responsible approach, and it was, uh, I think it influenced how things transpired and the kind of information that we got. And so I thank you publicly for that, and, uh, Citizens for Peace and Justice as well, and, uh, and everybody who's come. I think that hearing everybody is what our community is about. And, uh, so thank you very much. We're now gonna move on. If there's anybody who would like to address counsel on anything else, but is not on the agenda, uh, even if it's on the consent agenda, you can come up now. And if you're gonna be leaving now, which I won't blame you at a quarter to 10, um, please try to do so quietly. Gentlemen, thank you both.
Thank you.
For your service to the city, we appreciate it very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address counsel? Go ahead, Steve, come on up, while people are, thank you all for coming.
Steve Schnabel again. Uh, I had the benefit of being appointed by this council to serve on student community relations several years ago, and stepped down from that after a first term. I found that experience to be extremely frustrating, and I hope that things have changed in that. The university's involvement was minimal, uncooperative, and the, the, many of the student government participants, uh, had difficulty attending or paying attention, frankly. Um, so, let's not think that, that that commission, uh, might offer the best and, and strongest viewpoints, and, uh, I may apply for being, uh, assigned to that commission again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it. Okay. Um, at this time? Okay. Remind us of your name and...
Uh, Rajeshi Banerjee. I go by Rad.
Thanks, Rad.
So I heard it said by, uh, Mr. Connor, that isn't here anymore, that, um, Oxford, uh, we, as council can't change, uh, the laws, um, but that doesn't seem correct. It, it is true that, uh, we can change our, uh, policies related to police officers.
Sure.
So I would personally recommend that the PCRC gains the power to actually, um, reprimand officers directly, um, and that that is a legislative, uh, thing put forward in response to this, uh, that, uh, the citizens can choose to, uh, fire an officer if we don't feel safe under them.
Thank you for sharing your opinion. We appreciate it. Okay. We will move then to the consent agenda, and I have a motion to...
Motion to second.
Has been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be removed? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved, we'll move to resolutions. Please read the first one.
A resolution of the City Council of Oxford, Ohio, to continue as a member of the World Health Organizations and AARP's network of age-friendly cities and the AARP livable communities for a second five-year cycle of the Age Friendly Oxford Initiative.
Okay. And is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Sam, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Well, it's already been five years, and those of you that heard the presentation last meeting, I believe it was last meeting, from Age Friendly Oxford, uh, you can see a lot of work has been done.
Yep.
And so this would, would, uh, kinda memorialize and authorize that work to continue, to work with the community, and where there's opportunities for projects that would involve older adults, and which actually many of those things, uh, benefit all ages of the community. Uh, so they would like to continue doing that, and with this endorsement would, would provide that partnership with AARP and World Health Organization.
Okay. Thank you, Sam. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, yeah. We know what you think on it, yeah. Okay, is there any counselor discussion?
Just a thank you.
Absolutely.
For collaboration.
I've worked with this group, and they are a fabulous organization. Okay. All those in favor of the motion of the, uh, resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You have it. All right. We'll move to the second resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager and law director to sign the sub-grant agreement between Butler County, Ohio, and the city of Oxford for $1 million of American Rescue Plan Act state local fund, fiscal recovery funds, and assist with affordable housing infrastructure as allocated by the Butler County Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Jessica, welcome.
Yeah, so this has been going on for a while, where we discussed what to apply for. We submitted an application for the additional $1 million. It will be $500,000 toward the cottage community projects for the community development professionals, and another $500,000 will go to Habitat for Humanity for their infrastructure costs. This is just the final sub-recipient agreement, and that gives us permission to sign it and send it back.
Super. Affordable housing, housing for everybody, that's our goal. All right, is anyone from the public like to address this resolution? Counselors?
Awesome.
Awesome, okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between Duke Energy and the city of Oxford to receive funding for a mural to be located at the Duke substation at the intersection of Locust and Spring Street, for the city to develop an artist agreement that will outline the care and upkeep of the mural for a period of 10 years.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica? That title pretty well tells the story, but...
Yeah, we've been working very closely with Duke, um, as they work to renovate that substation, and part of it is tearing down a fence, and we said, "Well, instead of a fence, maybe you could do some sort of wall, and a wall would be a lovely thing for then a mural." And then we said, "And wouldn't you wanna help us pay for that mural?" And then they said, "Yeah, okay." And so this is the MOU, that would then, um, give a grant to the city of Oxford to help pay for the mural. Um, they do get to have some, like, Duke gets to give thumbs up, but Paco does review it first, and then Duke will say, "Okay," and then we can install the mural in that location.
That's great.
It'll probably be, um, I would imagine, it, if it goes quickly, it could be spring of '25 or summer of '25.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this one? Okay, counselors?
I just wanna thank Jessica for bringing this forward. We've been having conversations on Paco and on council to wanna beautify our community with murals. And I was just in Raleigh, um, over the weekend, and the end of last week, and there is art on the streets, on the sidewalk, on buildings, and it doesn't get defaced as much as people worry that it will. And so I'm excited to see that. It does make for a richer community. So thank you.
I hope someday they move the substation. That's a very valuable intersection for us, and I had hoped with some of their transmission line changes that that might be in the cards, but that's like a very expensive thing, but if we can keep our eye on the ball, so the next time we have an opportunity, but in the meantime, a mural would be a wonderful thing.
Or, or even what Hamilton is doing with their, are those electrical boxes? I mean, any little thing could be beautiful, it doesn't have to be this big grand thing.
Exactly. And we're still working on the sidewalk, correct, on Locust Street?
Yes, yes.
Next to the subs...
But yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, are you ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, move to the last one.
A resolution in the matter of approval of the solid waste management plan for Butler County Solid Waste Management District.
Is there a motion to adopt it?
Second.
And there's a second? Doug?
Yes, uh, the Butler County Solid Waste Policy Committee updated their solid waste management plan for the planning period 2025 to 2040. The city received the plan in February, it was reviewed by the Environmental Commission. So the solid waste policy committee is requesting ratification of the plan update by the city of Oxford, uh, for the Butler County Recycling and Solid Waste District to attain ratification. It requires 60% of the political subdivisions, uh, to review the plan and pass a resolution or ordinance declaring said approval by July. Uh, we placed a copy of the plan on our website. I included a summary of the plan in your packet, I did not include the full report, it's like 300 pages.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And some other information, the district diverted 13% of the waste in the residential commercial sector in 2021. Historically, from 2016 to 2020, the district has ranged between 11% to 17% diversion. Uh, the district has set a goal of reducing, uh, in recycling at least 25% of the solid waste generated by the residential slash commercial sector. I can also share with you that the district's highest performing recycling community in terms of per household collection was the city of Oxford, uh, at 548 pounds per household per year. Ross Township was the next highest at 390 pounds per year, so we do a good job. If you remember in years past, I don't think any of you were on council then, but we used to get an award, uh, they quit giving the award because we kept receiving it.
Yep.
So I recommend that you adopt this resolution this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address it? Okay, thank you. Counselors?
To, a quick comment about, their comment about how whenever you have curbside, it increases the likelihood that that household will, will recycle, and only seven do provide that. And as we look forward towards composting, we know that that same will apply, so, um, I look forward to Oxford also being amazing at that, too.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, we'll move to ordinances. We do not have a first reading, but we have one for second reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3750, supplemental budget ordinance number two, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Heidi is here. And there are some changes, yes.
There are some changes. So with, um, the, with the LED installation in 2021, Duke Energy notified us of an invoice that they failed to bill. They claimed that a new billing system at the time was the cause of the error in the billing, so we had to add the, even though our savings far surpasses this additional 47,000, um, we had to add it for appropriation for the remainder of the year. Um, the other change was, uh, in the solid waste fund, it's to the Rena and Jessica played for a grant to, for the, uh, Ohio EPA Recycle Ohio Grant, and so we have to, um, increase our revenues for that grant and match it with, um, the $7,034 plus the expense of the amount of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Those billing changes.
Appreciate it, Heidi. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this exciting ordinance? Okay. Counselors, you have any questions?
Yeah. Have we confirmed that we do owe them the $47,000? Did we have a budget surplus from what we expected, and we just didn't tell them?
I asked that question.
We carried this on the book literally for years. Uh, the last year, we still had a 50 thou, we reduced the PO to $50,000, uh, awaiting any final expenses. Uh, this past year, we finally closed that, uh, because of no invoices from Duke, so, uh, we did not spend our time hunting them down to say, you know, "Pretty pleased that we pay you everything we owe you." So it is a valid invoice, and we owe that. From memory, uh, our street lighting budget used to be $99,200 a year. I think it's in the 50s now, so we're, uh, we're saving roughly half every year, so this whole program will pay for itself in just a few years.
I, I'm not worried about that. Is there a statute of limitations on the billing?
I think they can look back six years on invoices.
Yeah, they caught it.
To be fair, we look back to on our water utility, if someone's not paid their fair share, we will go back and ask for it.
Yep.
No, that's completely reasonable, I would just love to put that towards something else.
Appreciate it. And thank you, Heidi. Did I ask if anybody from the public? Yes, I did. And counselors are done? You may read the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Navy?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, we'll move to announcements and communications, I'll start with city manager.
Sure, thank you, I just have one item. Uh, for the past 15 years, I have served on the Butler County 911 Planning Committee in a rotating capacity. The position was a one-year rotating one between the cities of Little Town, Fairfield, and Oxford. The 911 Planning Committee is responsible for maintaining and updating the countywide 911 plan. Uh, the plan addresses the system and the use in Butler County. Uh, the committee is also responsible for appointing members to the 911 Technical Advisory Committee. The reason I bring it up, this past year, the Ohio Legislature amended the statutes, uh, which changed the composition and title of the planning committee. The committee is now called, instead of the Planning Committee, the 911 Program Review Committee. That's not a big deal. But they did change the, uh, position. Instead of the city manager serving, it'll have to be, uh, a member of the legislative body. And so, uh, this summer, when we appoint, uh, council members, or, excuse me, uh, uh, assigned council members to different committees, we'll have to include that one. Another decision that'll have to be made by the 911, now Program Review Committee, is whether this position will be rotating or a fixed position. So I'll have more information on that later for you. Thank you, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Just a quick update on a few projects. Uh, the Ohio EPA did, uh, order the city to look into removing phosphorus from our wastewater treatment plant effluents. We've had our initial kickoff meeting on that, we'll be working on that, and you'll be getting more information on that in our CIP this summer. On the water side, uh, we did complete our pilot plant for water softening. Uh, all of that data is now being studied and incorporated into the design of, uh, a new softening plant for the city. So we had a, uh, 30% progress meeting today, so that, uh, is moving along as, as scheduled, on budget. And also, work progresses on Phase Four of the Ritz Trail, you can see a lot of that on the Oxford Riley Road. And we also completed a mile of paving in the last two days, so the segment from Pepper Park to the high school, uh, is paved. Uh, it's not finished, uh, we still need to do some topsoil work, seeding, strong, get signage up, but, uh, substantial progress is made. Thank you.
Very good news. Chief?
Just wanted to, uh, let you know that this week, April 14th through the 20th, is the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and that's, uh, for, to recognize dispatchers. So, uh, we, we have two sets of dispatchers, we try to recognize internally, that's our, um, our, uh, local dispatchers of one, or one desk, we call them, and then, uh, our Butler County dispatcher is at nine, um, so hats off to them, they're, they're, they're the actual first, first responder, they get the 911 call, um, so they go through a lot that people don't realize. It also happens to be the National Animal Control Officers Week, so we also have animal So, we also have animal control officers. We have three full-time public safety assistants, and they do both parking enforcement. It's where you might see them, but they also do animal control. So, they're, they try to do a lot of public education. They, they investigate animal cruelty, and they're trained in all forms of animal control. So, just wanted to give a shout out to those, those groups of our employees, their civilian employees, but we couldn't function without them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Heidi?
I know.
Okay. Mr. Robinson. Evan?
Hello, Your Honor.
Okay.
All my normal friends sit back with me.
I know. It's good to see you there, though. Sam?
On our two moratoriums that are going on right now, the short-term rental and the alley lot development, we're doing research on both of those items for the May Planning Commission meeting, May 14th. We'll have a discussion on short-term rentals. We have an intern working on some of the data analytics, and then we'll be bringing a code amendment as well on short-term rentals, following up on the discussion that we've had with, with you all a few months ago. And on the alley lot development, we had a staff meeting, the city manager Elliot called to just collect some of the concerns, and we've been researching this as well. And also wanted to let you all know that we have a new part-time employee, Chad Minix, who's out with our code enforcement officer, so we're beefing up our code enforcement staff, and that funding is coming from Interact for Health, the grant that Assistant City Manager Jessica Green got for us. So, that is going well. Just wanted to report those updates.
Okay. Thank you very much. Jessica?
This is our first meeting since the eclipse, and I just want to extend a huge thank you to everyone in the city who worked on that, especially my team, Seth, Ashley, Heather, Rena, and John Buckholz, like, just really worked tremendous amount of hours to pull together a bunch of ideas, but really it was every department, service, police, parks and rec, fire, everyone had a part to play in hosting the eclipse in our community, and what a beautiful and wonderful day it was. So, thank you to everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I would like the minutes to reflect that as a member of an off-maline, sometimes fairly profession, that I was fortunate when David Williams and John Hollingsworth agreed to undertake the representation and be special counsel of the city. I think that they hold, they represent the highest ideals of the profession with integrity and ethics. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mike?
Yeah. Just to reiterate, we thank everybody who came out tonight. We don't, you know, just give you lip service. We do listen to what you say because we're always trying to be better and to get better. I'd also like to say we survived the eclipse, and I also want to say, everybody in the city that worked at all the events, it was fantastic. Even got me out on a Sunday morning to walk that 5K, so, so we had a great time. Thanks.
Yep.
Thanks for bringing up the weeks that are happening right now for celebrating the, those specific groups. And the animal control van was parked in front of my car, and I like ran out, so I was like, what are you doing? We got like a crazy raccoon, or what's going on? And I was so excited about it, but it was a parking ticket. But I interface with them just with work whenever we know that there is obvious animal abuse, and the seriousness they take it is really appreciated, and because we know that that person who's abusing the animal is likely going to abuse their partner and then maybe go on to other people. So, it's, it's nice to have people like that that are there to take care of us.
Absolutely.
Amber?
My husband and I chose to enjoy the eclipse in our backyard, but I have several students who were uptown, and they had a great time. And so I want to thank everyone who put that together, and the 5K was awesome, too. And big thank you to Counselor French, who's not here, but who really had a lot of the vision, especially for the 5K and all of that, so.
Okay. Jason?
A lot has already been said, and I have so much more to say, and there's no time for it, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Leave it like that, okay?
All right. It's, it's late. Some of you guys know that I did a ride-along with our Fire and EMS staff on Friday night, and I have so many thoughts because it really helped pull so many things together for me. We've been looking at spreadsheets and staffing, and it's such a peculiar line of work and operation that I, like, I don't consider myself to be super dumb, but it's complicated. I wrap my head around what, what the issues are. It's taken me a lot. But I want to just start tonight because I think it ties into the conversation we've been having, which is, I'm always grateful for all the city employees, but I'm particularly, having particular gratitude for our public safety employees and the particular challenges they, they undertake in their daily jobs. I think that, you know, their jobs are difficult, not just for the obvious reasons of running into buildings and, but their, their jobs are stressful and hard and the hours, and, and I think it's easy to take those services to granted because we, you know, we're happy to not, you know, we're not happy, happy to not use those services. Like, I'm happy to not have an ambulance come to my house, but, but to know that it's there. And so now I, you know, I now hear the siren, and I was like, wow, I didn't hear the siren before, and it goes off all the time. And I think one could be said, I was up with the police and fire on Spring Street at 2:30 in the morning, and it's a crazy scene up there. And so to those people who are trying to navigate that to keep us safe, to keep themselves safe or their families, there's a reason why the systems afford them deference. And so it doesn't mean that we're not, you know, careful and critical, and we don't want the best from our systems, but, you know, tonight I'm just feeling grateful. And I'll share more about what I learned about the complexities of the staffing and all that stuff next time, but just tonight's kind of a, a, a express gratitude to those staff in particular.
Super. Thank you, Dave. I also want to give thanks to everybody who worked on the eclipse, and a lot of, pretty much everybody that I see sitting around had something to do
Yeah.
with that on that day and the days leading up to it. I also appreciated the work that Alex did and that staff did on the 5K, especially, we had, did you know that Princess Leia was actually there?
Yeah.
And gave me a medal. And I, I just, thank you, Heather. And I, I was especially, I liked all the data because I found out that I was second in my age group, which was really exciting. There were two. Anyway, the eclipse, it was fabulous. We'll never do that again. I mean, that's a once, literally once-in-a-lifetime event, but it was pulled off so well, and everybody, even in Cincinnati, televisions were here because this is where it was happening, and kudos to everybody. I want to remind people of the Kiwanis Pancake. This is the last time you'll hear it, but it is this Saturday, so starting at 7:00 a.m. at Tallowanda High School. You can buy your tickets a dollar cheaper earlier, but a lot of people just go and pay there, and that's okay, too. The NAACP Dinner is coming up on Sunday at 5:00 p.m. So, if you are interested in that, you'd better act quickly because they need to plan ahead, and I don't know when the deadline is for tickets. I don't know. But you better hurry up because they need to plan. But those are both really important community events to bring everybody together, to break bread, to converse and be part of a community.